Above and beyond the outdoor option that I showed you. So we had community members and partners stakeholders, I mean, step forward and say, here's all the different ways we'd like to utilize an indoor pool. So we gave you three options. What you're seeing up on the screen right now, think of this as the all-in. This is the Cadillac. This is top tier of what you could potentially offer. So what you're looking at here is a six-lane, 25-yard competition pool. You'll see some bleachers seating over to the left of that. In the center, it's a leisure pool. And I'm going to show you some imagery here in just a moment. Leisure pool, kids pool, program pool. They're in the center. And the pool on the far right, that is a therapy pool. Warm water. It's somewhat small, but the intent is that therapy, rehab, young kids swimming lessons could happen out of that body of water. One thing to know, coming to the LBC, any pool coming to the LBC, there's a few things that we know has to get done. You would have to have a bathroom expansion in order to accommodate the additional usership of the swimming pool. So what you're seeing here, and when you look up close, the footprint of the restroom spaces has been bumped out. We have to do that. The other thing that you're seeing here, probably can't see that. As we were going through this, initially, we were trying to get people to enter the pool through the restrooms. The more we did that, the more we disliked it. And so what we ended up doing for all of your indoor pool options is there is an access or utility hallway right now with the emergency staircase coming from the second floor down. What we would be looking at is relocating that staircase and basically creating a new hallway from the main corridor right here and going straight to the swimming pool. So when we think about indoor swimming at LBC, there's going to be a little bit of rework that we would recommend with the rec center in order to make this work. So let's see a few images about what I'm talking about. So this is a six-lane, 25-yard pool. This is very similar to what you are looking at in this concept. So this would be about three and a half to four feet. That's something to consider. We haven't decided that. Down to a bit deeper water. There would be starting blocks on this. So you could have practice or meets out of this pool. This is the rec pool. So we would not be able to get zero depth to the same degree as outdoor here because we just don't have the footprint for it. In order to go from zero depth to deeper water, you need a pretty good run in order to make that happen. We don't have the space here. So the rec pool starts out at about a foot and a half and would go down to about five feet or shallower if that's what McLean was interested in. But again, this pool is about kids. It's about families. And it's about programs like swimming lessons, fitness, et cetera. Therapy pool, this is about the size of what we're showing for you. Like I said, it's a warm body of water with an ADA ramp. There would be jets, in-water seating. And this is designed and created so that you could have a variety of programs, including rehab. This is not a hot tub. It's not as hot as that. Once you get too hot, you really can't be doing physical therapy or fitness in any kind of way, nor can you put children in there. So this would be a temperature that would allow for all that, but that would be warmer than the other bodies of water. So that was A. B. Again, we wanted to explore, could you put an eight-lane competition pool on this site? The answer is yes. You could get an eight-lane competition pool here. The downfall, however, to what you're seeing is that in this setup here, you see the bleachers over on the left. This would actually require demolition of 12 parking spaces to the west. Yes?
I was just wondering, where's the dining space in our first option? Was it in the lap pool? Because you said it goes from four feet to a little bit deeper.
Well, right now, we don't have that. You could. We're not showing dining right now.
Oh, okay.
If that was something that you wanted, we could work that in, but it would probably just be a one meter, not a three meter. And you wouldn't have two, you would have one. So if that was something that was decided that you wanted, dining could get integrated into indoor Concept A. We're showing it here in B. Because at the time, we were thinking about potentially Cornell College. What are the needs that they have? Cornell College, from the best of my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, who'd been working on this study, they are really going to need eight lanes. They will not compete in six. So if we're making decisions for that level of competition swimming, Option A is kind of off the table. They are going to need something like this. And even then, we may have to get more seating in here. So they reported that they would need somewhere between 200 and 300 spaces for spectator seating. That's about what you're seeing right here. That's why we pulled this one together. So when we think about all the programming the city is interested in, I really want to look at this one and tell you that programming will be minimal for the community. You'll have some laps, you will have lap swimming. You will have swim team. You could do some water walking. You could have some swimming lessons, but not to the degree that a leisure or shallow water pool would be able to provide. This is an example. Don't worry about the pool in the background. That's not included. But this body of water here in the foreground, this is what you're seeing. Eight-lane, 25-yard comp pool with one and three-meter diving.
Just so everybody has came to the area to, for Cornell to be at the table for any discussion, this is what has to be built.
Where, where? Lauren, I've got two arms. Lauren, this Lauren. The two, the outdoor lap pools, were those eight lanes or six lanes?
Six. You could grow that. You could grow that. Are you asking in relation to competition or collegiate?
In Cornell.
Cornell. We would need to grow it. And I don't know what, I just don't know what the temperament or desire is to swim indoor. I'm sorry, swim outdoor. They probably don't want to swim.
Well, yeah, there was outdoor with a roof.
Outdoor with a roof. Okay, okay.
So my understanding, dating back to when we built LBC and we were going through that discovery, is it's not only the number of lanes that Cornell requires collegiate competition requires, but it's also the length of the lanes is different as well. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
You know, I had down Deb that it was 25 yards. Are they metered?
They are meters.
Well, we could convert that, but we can get 25 meters in here, too. We cannot do 50.
Just wanted to be clear with the people here.
Good point, Deb. Thank you for that clarification. So I went rogue a little bit on this Concept C. Initially, we weren't going to explore this. But I was sitting at my computer and I was just thinking, I was really trying to rack my brain of everything that we had learned. We know Mount Vernon cannot, is likely, I shouldn't say cannot, likely will not be able to build what you want fully in an outdoor pool and what you want fully in an indoor pool. The funds are likely just not going to be there. So then I went back to the public engagement. What are the core things people said they wanted? And I tried to give you an option that whittles everything down to the core, to the fundamental of offering. That's where Concept C came from. So what you're seeing here, Concept C, it does not take up the real estate that what you have been seeing. What this is, the three-lane, 25-yard pool. It goes from four feet down to deeper water. Dining is not included here. Because again, we're trying to be as efficient with spaces we possibly could. But I want to get to the imagery because that's what's going to communicate a little bit more. So this is an example of what three-lane, 25-yard looks like. Integrated into this, however, is basketball, volleyball, and a movable floor. So the movable floor comes into play because we know that you have parties that might need to happen. Who does parties? Kids. We know that swimming lessons is a really important program. We know that some members of the community may actually need to do fitness classes sitting down, right? Four feet is not shallow enough to do any of that. So you see that big black strip kind of in the middle? That's a bulkhead. And a bulkhead is basically a temporary wall. And that wall allows a floor to come in to the right of it. And that floor can either go all the way down to four, can go to four feet in the bottom, or you could bring it all the way up to deck level if you wanted. Let's say that Matt only had one lifeguard. You didn't feel comfortable opening up that whole thing. Pull the floor up. And now you've just got the space to the left. Or he's got itty-bitty swim lessons going on on the right, and then he's got deep-water fitness going on to the left of it. So when I, again, we need to come back to public engagement with the core, you know, comments we're about, core utilization, and that's where C came from.
Does this also enlarge the bathroom area? I see the hallway there.
Yes. Any addition here is going to expand the restroom space. Yep. But as we were going through this, we started to hear feedback from staff in the LBC, and the idea got floated out. What would it look like if we were to, let's say, build on additional rec space? That could be a variety of things. But we want to be able to have more recreational activity at the LBC. So we did go through an exercise of getting additional multipurpose space in here. And that's what you're seeing all over here. It's just additional expansion, if the city ever wanted to, on the site in relation to a swimming pool. And we needed to map that out a little bit because if this ever became a viable option, we want to make sure that we lay out this particular area appropriately so that you can service a swimming pool and you can service additional rec space. Okay, so let's go through this. Indoor pool A, again, this is the all-in option. Total amount of water is just over 5,200 square feet. Matitude of cost, 14.5 to 16.5 million for this particular option. Expenditures at 235,000 for the year with a cost recovery of 40 to 60%. Number of lifeguards at any particular time would be in the four to six range to operate this option. Indoor pool B, it's the eight-lane competition pool. Just over 4,400 square feet, so a little bit smaller. Matitude of cost for this, 11.5 to 13.5 million. Expenditures, 195,000, so less, with cost recovery of 30 to 50%. Number of lifeguards between one and three at any given time. Indoor pool C, what I've been calling the program pool. 1,800 square feet, 7 to 8 and 1/2 million for that development. 79,000 for the annual expenditures, cost recovery of 30 to 50% with one to three lifeguards at any particular time. Okay, so that's a summary of it all. Council members, you should have this in your package. If you wanted to look more in depth, you certainly can. It's also in the report. Yes?
So thinking about C and therapy pool or perhaps additional recreational, rather than having rec space, could you configure something that would be value-added big enough that it makes sense for younger children or something? And utilize that space for additional square footage of water?
Let me just repeat it back to make sure I understand the question. So what you're wondering is keep this lap pool, but add shallow water or kids space in order to bring up that cost recovery and utilization? Is that what you're asking?
In number four and five.
Sure, yeah. I mean, there's ample opportunity to, anything that you see tonight, there's opportunity for change. This is a feasibility study, so we won't get into design. Whenever you move forward, absolutely, you can adjust all that. Could you get rid of this and put in a pool? Sure. We're likely going to be adding staff. We'll be adding utility. We'll add capital expense to that. Building what we call a wet space, the natatorium space, is more expensive than building dry space. So we just know that adding any additional water is going to increase, I'll just put that slide, it's going to increase that, what, 7 to 8 and 1/2 million price tag? Let me keep going because we need to tell you about this. So public input, too. So we got through all that. We had a meeting in November. I know I saw some of you there. We had a meeting in November, I don't know, 40, 45 people in attendance. And then we also did a second survey. We went to the November meeting. We got feedback from the community saying, we need a little bit more. We need a little bit more information. We want to go back to the general community and ask them some more questions to learn more. So after that November meeting, we actually turned around and did a second survey. And I want to tell you about that survey. So we were very forthcoming with what we asked the community. We were pretty pointed and direct in what we were trying to get from them regarding the options that we had explored so far. This is exactly how it was presented. Which outdoor pool do you or your household prefer? 78% said Concept A. We did give the caveat, because this is important to your community, that this could be enclosed, that one could not be. So that is going to be part of the reason that this number is so much higher because we know indoor is desired here. And this is the option that allowed for that. So that's how that question shook out. How interested are you in an option to design the outdoor pool so a portion can be enclosed? 43% are very interested. 13% are interested. But at the end of the day, 56% over half are saying, I'm interested or very interested in an option that would, you know, allow you to enclose. Should the pool include a splash pad? 70% of people said yes. So again, if you were to go to survey number one and look at how that ranked, that doesn't really make sense. But they were also ranking it in comparison to other things that they found to be priorities and of need. This direct question just about it, that's how it shook out. Davis Park was overwhelmingly the preferred option for the outdoor swimming pool, at 76%. In this survey, if you did not take it, I want to give you the lay of the land a little bit. Some questions, we identified as for the outdoor pool. Some questions were identified as for the indoor pool. We've switched now to talk about the indoor pool. So I wanted to know, what programs are of interest to you in your household in the indoor pool? Because we need to balance these up against the concepts you're seeing. The highest-ranked item is space for swimming lessons. So what do swimming lessons need? Swimming lessons needs restroom space, changing space, shallow water, deck, spectator seating. And not just shallow water, typically really shallow, if not zero depth, all the way down to deeper water to progress through the levels. So that was high-ranking, followed by kids areas, including shallow water and play features. This is important to us because when we think about cost recovery, we think about revenue generation, and we think about the finances. This is what people are saying they're wanting in their indoor pool. So in order to make this viable and feasible, we've got to get these types of activities into your indoor space. In my brain, I'm just going to go out on a limb and say, Concept B, indoor, the comp pool, it's not going to fit these types of activities to the degree that you have to. Lap lanes for lap swimming, that's up there. And you can see everything else. Aqua fitness, ability to host swimming lesson, I'm sorry, ability to host swim team. Practice was in the middle. Space for rehab. Ability to host swim meets is towards the end. And dive, programs, dive team was last. So again, what we're really looking at are those first four or five programs. They're really ensuring that they're going to get into an indoor pool. This is what people are saying they need in order to utilize it. Which indoor pool concept you feel needs the community's best? Community needs best. Concept A at 84%. Concept A is the all-in. And that's not no surprise when we think about all the programs they want in there. And depending on which segment of the population we're talking to, they have very different needs. And that's what Concept A is giving. It's giving rehab, therapy use. It's giving kids. It's giving swim team. It's giving adult programming. I don't think we actually, I never spoke to the city when I asked this question, but developing at the LBC and having some conversation, it was coming up, would fees remain the same at the LBC if a pool were to come here? And everybody was a little bit all over the board. So I wanted to know, do you or do you not have an LBC membership? If you do or do not, well, if you do, are you willing to pay more? If you do not, are you willing to get a membership? So the first category here, current membership holders, are you willing to pay more? 69% said yes. But I wanted to give you context. Apologize, I don't remember this stat off the top of my head. 47% responded to have an LBC membership. So almost half. 69% are willing to pay more if a swimming pool with the amenities they're looking for are included. So again, amenities I'm looking for. We're thinking programs. We're thinking all that flexible space. If it has what I'm looking for, 69% are saying yes. For those who do not currently have a membership, that was 53%. 62% of that said, yeah, if it has the amenities I want, I'm willing to buy a membership. So remember back to some slides ago about fees being important. That's why we want to ask this question. Because if you develop at the LBC and you're going to be increasing costs, it's something that we need to know. What's the tolerance level for that? If you take into your final report in like the 200th page of the written comments in one of your surveys, you're going to see varying reporting back to you. There are some people saying, I don't want to use the pool. I want tiered membership pricing at the LBC because I'm never going to use it. I don't want to pay for it. Don't charge me more. I don't support it. And vice versa. You have people saying, I will only use this swimming pool. I don't want to pay for the rest of the LBC. So there is going to be something to think about and consider when we think about building at the LBC above and beyond just the pool spaces. It's going to be the logistics behind membership.
Figure what cafeteria pricing, man, or who does some of this, though? They want a cath from Ry, anybody that's five bucks or 10 bucks. They pay a separate fee, right?
To take a class.
Yeah. Yeah, or to go use a pool. You might have a separate price. By any chance, Lauren, you've shown us the percentages that favor the outdoor, the two outdoor options, or the three indoor. Did you ask about, now let's look at all five. What's number one, number two, number three, number four, number five?
I did not ask that. But I do ask some more pointed questions about indoor and outdoor. So I asked very explicitly, please rank which facility is most important to you or your household? It was a weighted item, meaning depending on how many people ranked number one, number two, or it doesn't apply, it's very close. So a weighted score, that's all it says. It's going to take all those data points and calculate which comes on top. Outdoor pool, just a hair, is coming up slightly higher than indoor, which is consistent with what we were hearing in public engagement, both through in-person meetings and the survey. Again, when you read into your survey, you will see explicit comments saying, if the outdoor pool has to be, basically is going to go away, I want you to build an outdoor pool and not an indoor. Some people are going to be really explicit with that, saying, this is what I want if the existing swimming pool is going to go away. And I'm not, I'm just giving you narrative behind the written comment because not everything is represented in easy numbers. Some of the really useful information is within a written comment. So similar question, asked a different way. Where should the city place greatest emphasis when developing an aquatic facility? 53% say outdoor. 47% are saying indoor. Again, there's no smoking gun here. This is all about slight differences, priorities, budget, uses. All that is going to have to come into play.
And again, one of the outdoor options can be converted to indoor.
Absolutely.
None of the indoor options can be converted to outdoor.
Right. When I add up, if I calculated this rate, outdoor pool A with the splash pad and enclosed total would be about 13, 15 million. Compared to rec pool A, which you said 14 and 1/2 to 16 and 1/2, feels like the outdoor is a better investment. Now, Chris is over there.
The indoor.
Having a heart attack.
The indoor.
That's what I'm talking about. The outdoor with the indoor.
And then you start looking at the cost recovery.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And the other thing, though, I have a question on. With that kind of option, if you eventually enclosed it, you could sell year-long passes, right? But what does that do to match situation with staffing? Because, you know, we've got staffing at the LBC. Is there, you know, can you leverage that? There's a lot of things to think about, right?
Yeah, are you saying staffing issues with lifeguards? Or are you saying with just general staffing?
Lifeguards and maintenance, you know. Is there efficiency with having that staffing at the LBC with an enclosed indoor pool versus the other situation?
Well, either way, there are going to be lifeguards, right?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Most of our lifeguards go back to school in today's environment.
Yeah, so there's a national shortage of indoor lifeguards for year-round facilities, so there's no doubt about that. But I think the numbers we came up with was four to seven, or maybe for the indoor enclosed, outdoor enclosed pool, excuse me? Maybe?
I'd have to go back to London.
It just depends on.
Outdoor enclosed.
Staffing is going to be a mess. Just know two ways about it, I guess.
But remember, by the time this gets built, this community is going to have 5,200 people.
That's a solid. 5,200 people made up of my dad and people like that from age in place.
Yeah, so to be honest with you, we did, outdoor pool, Concept B. We put on the LBC site, it does not fit. So you are tight here, I'm sorry, at the LBC. Outdoor pool, it's not feasible there. So I just, I didn't want to communicate. We didn't try it there for the exact reason you just brought up efficiency with staff. So will there be redundancy a bit? Because even me coming in to lap swim in that pool in the middle of December, you're going to have to have an admission person there, someone checking in. At the LBC, you already have it. So that's what I need by duplication of service. Maintenance is going to have to be dispatched to a different location. So that's a duplication of service. So there is a, that's going to happen, absolutely. And I did forget to mention, I do think it's important about those indoor options, we did not account for or include additional parking that may be needed at the LBC. So in the costing, it does not include additional parking, nor recite plan additional parking. And we know that you're likely going to need that if you were to develop at the LBC.
So the pricing that you gave for outdoor pool A was for six lane and not eight, right? So what is the ballpark of what an eight lane would increase about? You have any idea?
Is there any way I can get that to you after the meeting? So I will need to take into account a few additional things. An example is the bathhouse. We would have to circle around on the bathhouse. We did not include costs to, so in that three to three and 1/2 budget, I need to go back and look. I don't know that we fully flushed out the year-round bathhouse HVAC and insulation that would be needed for that. Let me circle back around on that. And then I'll circle back around on costing to take that to an eighth lane.
Obviously.
The question that I have for you is, are we wanting to go to eight lane from a Cornell's, is that the thought process here?
So that was the thought process, that if funding is available for us to go to an eight lane, does it make it worthwhile?
So that changes that number.
Chris Keaton, your microphone.
That will, that will change that number. And the reason I say that is because what Cornell requires is a minimum of an eight lane, 25 meter, and then the diving. But it also requires seating for 450 people and certain other things.
450?
They have early said 200.
I thought a couple hundred.
I think it's more than 200. Well, 200 spectators plus participants.
Yeah, keep in mind that participants have to have somewhere to go to.
So if you're looking at going to that eight lane, I just want to give more on all the information to make sure that when she's doing that, you have to plan for that additional seating.
Yes.
And then the other items. If we're talking about bringing Cornell into the mix.
So you're right. I mean, that's where I was going. And you're right, in fairness, all considerations would need to be made for what they're asking for. And we should probably include that. So we can say we looked at it.
Yeah, which is Concept, to a certain extent, would be Concept B in the indoor. That was our conversation back from Cornell. So they have, I mean, the NCAA has a standard for which it has to be designed. And their interest, Cornell's interest, is in competitive swimming and diving. So if they're going to be a part of that, then it has to be at the NCAA's minimum requirements for size and capacity.
I would also do the look at that ADA ramp. That may not be able to be included. So we'll have to go back to NCAA design standards for that.
So I just wanted to make sure that's where, kind of figured that's where you were going with this.
Well, that was where I'm going. But this is where we have to weigh out. I mean, given the statement that Tom just read earlier, that ADA compliance is important.
And, and right now, I mean, just because we don't, if, if we, if we went away from that ramp, there are other ADA compliant options. So that's not to say that we're, we're getting rid of that and only if you're fully able by, by can you participate in these. I mean, we currently have the leverage seating, whatever the issue is.
But the truth is, is there's no, there's no benefit to going from six to eight unless Cornell is coming into.
Is a hundred percent on, yep.
That is, that is, that would be the core reason for, for taking that pool to the next level in order to, you know, potentially capture some revenue coming back.
Just from a big picture feasibility type discussion, doing something of the, like the, I can't remember which option it is. I don't know if you're going left, right or right to left.
That's okay.
The one right behind you there, Lauren, yes. You could do something like that and then you could also then place a splash pad facility somewhere else, potentially at Davis Park to make up for that. Now, the, the challenge to that is you lose revenue generation because I don't believe it's cost effective to have staffing and, and, you know, charging for a splash pad in that way. It's interesting, and again, the one at Solon, it's really kind of cool. It sits there dormant and somebody wants to come play at the splash pad and they hit this great button and boof. You know, so it's, you know, it also, that type of thing does allow you to manage some of the costs a little bit differently than a continuously running splash pad. But that would, again, be an additional cost with no additional revenue, but it would help perhaps meet some of the other needs that you're not meeting with the option there.
Sure. We've actually seen splash pads go inside too.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I just had a little bit more for you. I know this has been a lot, a lot to hear, a lot to download. We'll, we'll get this wrapped up. So just a few additional things. You know this, at indoor and outdoor is of interest. We talked about outdoor being more associated with leisure and family use, indoor more with, more specific type of programming, fitness, laps, swimming, that type of thing. There is support for an indoor, both the LBC and enclosing part of the outdoor pool. And we talked about fees of the LBC being a consideration. So I'm not going to go through this. This is all the information we covered. You did the math for me. You also are going to have it on this slide if you didn't want to have to do the math again, at least from, from the information I presented tonight. And then I'll work on the updated cost of, of taking that outdoor A to the eighth lane and everyone that's going to come with that and which an updated cost is.
Eighth lane you've covered, yeah.
Eighth lane, and yes.
Would, would you just be able to also cost out a splash pad that could, you know?
Five hundred thousand to a million, that's, that's your, that's going to be your.
Now, is that standalone?
Yeah, you're still going to be in that range. So I give you that healthy range because there's so much variability in that. That's going to come down to.
I was, when I think about that, I think about the splash pad where everybody's just running around underneath water dropping or it's spraying up versus the wonderful, you know, feature in the middle that you showed.
Yeah.
So that, that accounts for that variance. That would make sense. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
So you don't have to do that.
Okay, thank you. So any water recreation space you have, I would really encourage me to think about revenue generation. So even though you don't pay them. Inter, I think we need to talk about rentals and shelter, shade structures and proximity to restrooms and trying to monetize that in a way. And I like your idea about the baller, that basically if it's not in use, you're not paying for that water to run. You leave the baller, it's going to go. I think it's a really efficient way to go about that.
Yeah, I was thinking that way too. That's a good idea.
Now we just need a bike trail to go by.
Well, like I said, I want to thank you, I want to thank council for, for sticking with me through this. It's been a lot to, lot to go through. As we move forward, reach out to myself, Matt, Chris, they can get in contact with me and we can keep this discussion going. Per usual, this may be one of the last big presentations we do, but it doesn't mean we're done, it doesn't mean we're gone. It just means Chris and Matt don't have to listen to me every, you know, every moment.
No, thanks for talking, Lauren.
Not just tonight, but I, I watched and, and there's almost nothing more boring than watching a Zoom recording. But I watched the one from the pool committee a while back when you presented partway through the process. And I've just appreciated the public engagement, the presentation, the here's how we got to where we are through the whole thing. It's, it's been a pleasure.
And you know, to have the first survey have four hundred and change and the second one actually be almost six hundred?
Yeah.
That's unusual, so.
You know, we typically see that when it's, it's not supported or there is a more negative connotation. You had that positive connotation with this and that, that was really exciting. That's why your project was so fun, is there's support here. This isn't about, I don't want it. This is about, I do. I just have some priorities about how I want to use that, which is.
Yes, I wanted it, I want it the way I want it.
And also now.
And I would say, Lauren, that for me, I, I, this has probably been one of the projects in the almost twenty years I've been involved in city business that I have been the furthest away from. And to be able to come in and have a reservation like this, I just feel really engaged. You did a really good job of, of, you know, bringing forward the community input, the design inputs, the location. And I just really appreciate the, the ability you had to communicate that to someone who's purposefully stayed away. And it, it really helps. I think that it not only gives those of us here in this room a really good picture of those options, but I think as this is disseminated to the community, it, it will provide additional feedback. You know, we may want to do survey number three and get a thousand responses.
Just trying to one-up yourself.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The decision for Waters Edge, selecting them in this process. Deb decision. Deb, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, there is. I just want to get some feedback. I, I was looking back at the original proposal that we went through a year ago, right? Where we were evaluating who we were going to bring in to do this. And there is no doubt in my mind, Lauren, that Waters Edge was the right decision. The methodology that you guys used was very inclusive. You constantly pulsed the community and kept the committee informed along the way. And I very much appreciate that. To that end, you were truthful to your word. It wasn't just a proposal, but it's the way that you do business and thank you.
You're here. Matt and Katie, nice job.
I would like to end this meeting with saying the same thing. Pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Really?
They won't be able to shake me now.
Cut that on an hour.
Matt would be disappointed if we went through a meeting and I didn't give him a little.
Remember.
So are there next steps? What are we doing here?
What are the next step?
Yeah.
Get the pool.
Break it down, Chris.
First and foremost, Lori, I've been extremely impressed with the product that is coming back as far as managing numbers and not necessarily being hamstrung by what I do. I'm always going to do that reality check. And to a certain extent, Lauren gave you the reality check on cost, prices, you know, doing business on support. So there's a couple, couple items that I think really need to be addressed moving forward. Number one, there are multiple concepts. And part of your job is to really kind of hone in on the concept that you really want to move forward with. So that's one. Two, it's, then it turns to, to me and my staff to try and figure out, like we did with the LBC, how do we make this happen? This is going to be trickier than the LBC, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it can't be done. So the challenge is going to be, do we identify what we feel comfortable with borrowing? Is this a, a concept that we determine, do we look at borrowing for the entire amount? Do we take this to the vote of the people? If we take it to the vote of, vote of the people, what's that look for, you know, as a LBC, are we used to, we end up doing something like that? But the only, the only item from an analysis standpoint that I am going to probably keep in front of you at any one given time is, we're only allowed to borrow so much as a city, right? And if you took the worst case scenario in my mind, that pool that's somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen, sixteen million, that's all we can borrow as a community at any one given time. So that concept and just in general, unless it comes with a significant amount of donations, is probably not on the table for us to even consider. Now, as value increases over the years, capacity increases as well, maybe we get, it's not going to happen in time to, to give Christian, you know, the sense that he does not have to cobble together, they just pull it. So with that being said, you know, I think we, we have realistic concepts. Conversations with the, the general public, we know where we're at. So can we do it? A, how much would the bonding capacity, is the council comfortable with it? So is that six million of a ten million dollar facility, that means that there's potentially four million that has to be sunk. Cornell laid out a pretty strict directive as far as what they need in order for it to be feasible. Does that need to come on board? Reading between the lines, I don't necessarily know that that's, that's going to be on the table. So it's all here. I, I think Lauren and Waters Edge, I wish you did more than just pools. Anytime you exchange your engineering prowess, let me know, please. This report has been incredible from, from my perspective, that lays it all out there and it's truthful. In, in my twenty-one years of doing this, I've had a lot of consultants that will come in. So ninety, ninety-five percent recovery rates, it's just not real and never ends up real. The other thing that, you know, you have to keep in mind is Solon's a growing community too. We're taking them in and there's a lot of people that come from Solon, they could build their own pool at some point in the future. So what we've been presented as I think what we can sustain is just how do we get that to now? Before everybody gets too excited, we are a minimum of three years away from any sort of shovel going into the ground. So temper expectations to a certain extent, and I regret, but.
Without, without a significant donation.
Correct. Yes.
For the capital S.
Yes.
I would remind us that it was two to three years out when we started the fundraising for the LBC.
And I would remind, remind everybody, we got a million and a half in fifteen minutes for the LBC, so it can happen. So here's, here's the concept, you have to decide on the concept and you have to decide on the path forward. Tonight. You're going to have to find a new partner record. I am on roll, I'm just post-itting. No, I would, I would, in order to keep the momentum moving forward, whether or not it's, I, I, we have budget at the next meeting. I really think we do hone in on the concept. I do not believe the relationship with Waters Edge ends tonight. I believe you figure out moving, moving forward, what concept you want us to, to move forward with and then we, you know, have a discussion with Waters Edge on, you know, what the potential next step actually looks like. So they can hone in on, on numbers that I feel more comfortable taking to the.
Yeah, if it was said, I apologize, the school. The Dr. Bates Morse can't find money anywhere to partner with the college on an indoor facility.
So the, the school's kind of in a general, the same general, but they have two capital projects and I don't want to speak for Dr. Bates Morse, but right now, the outdoor athletic facility is kind of priority number one, is under construction. They also have a fourth building on their plan sheet. So believing or expecting the pool to be at, at the table with this conversation, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule it out one hundred percent, but I just, I definitely wouldn't say the odds are, are in our favor in that regard. And they just, they've got priorities of their own currently.
I think the, the best way to approach this is doing planning moving forward as the city. And if an opportunity like that does arise, that's a bonus. But I, I don't think we want to do our planning with that because I, I just, they, they do have a lot on their plate. And I think, you know, Cornell's restrictions aren't necessarily because there's people sitting up in, in those buildings saying, well, we need this because we need this. It's the NCA and we all know that. One question I do really just quick, Lauren, and I, I apologize for dominating your time. But when I look at these concepts, you know, I go back to some of my grandchild's pool toys they have now and, and I'm thinking, you know, okay, what if I take this magnetic tile and pull it out and it's now this? What, what does that do? I mean, as we're thinking about concepts, can we consider those things and have things sort of parceled out?
So you mean, just let me, again, I always like to clarify. So maybe what you're, what you're saying is I want to see all the features itemized out because maybe you don't want two water slides, you want one big one, we're going to save X, Y, Z dollars and you can then put that money in some other locations. So you would like to see itemization of.
Maybe not to that degree, but I, I was thinking more like, what if, what if we extract the lazy river?
Yeah, I think, so that would be, I think, phase two of the process. So you have, like I said, I think for, for you as a council, you choose, here's, here's everything that you've asked Waters Edge to lay out thus far. And, and I really do believe at this point, we owe it to the public to come out and make an open statement that, you know, right now we are going to pursue an outdoor first, possibly indoor second. You know, this option makes the most sense. So that is what we need to hone in on and then, then we would go back to Waters Edge and say, okay, we've, we've.
Now they're.
How do we, you know?
Can we phase it in, can we use this other?
So, you know, I'm going to ask that question. If I know that I have six million dollars to put on the table in front of you, I'm going to tell Waters Edge, I've got six million. Give me the best option that you can give me right now and then give me the other components that I can potentially add in the future. On a shameless plug, I'm going to, to, to do this, whether or not it's me when it comes time or not. This is the reason that you don't get quite as specific with the sales packs, but. Had we not, you know, the, the ability to maybe do this would have been a little easier, but we're locked into, to those particular categories until I think twenty thirty-four. And that's it, the state has to take from us too. That I think moving forward is, you have to decide on conceptually where we're going. And I think we skip to the next meeting and then maybe move into May to have those discussions. And then we, we have another discussion with Waters Edge, okay? You did an awesome job here. What does phase two, as far as your fee structure include? Thankfully, if, since we're satisfied and there's service in this theory, we don't have to go back to an R and D process. We can just continue the relationship.
Can I ask one more question? So what is the perception of the involvement of the pool committee going forward? Are they, are they still advising and, and an advisory body? Or are we saying the pool committee, thank you very much for your service and now we're complete?
No, I think that's really up to the council. You know, I, this could potentially be a standalone meeting where you invite the committee and park and record and have one meeting and say, by the time we leave, we are going to come to an agreement on what concept. And in the, through this process, I think the important thing is, is all of those entities have got to stand behind one concept moving forward. have got to stand behind one concept moving forward. We've all seen bond issues where things have been piecemealed, and groups have gotten really upset about something being cut out or, or not, and the bond fails, nobody wins. So, you know, that, I'll leave that up to you. You can email me with your thoughts as far as that goes, but really, it's up to the council moving forward, if you want to have everybody sitting at, in one room, or just ask them individually to make recommendations to you.
Thinking about that, your, your comment about not making log option sales packs so specific, sometimes you have to, to give them a pass.
Well, sure, I do. But I, I mean, the, the, moving forward, the, the more wiggle room you give staff, the easier it is to complete, I can backfire on you, because then people can...
Then you...
Well, I, you know, I look back at the two major ones that I've been involved in, and the one we, was, you know, community center and fire station, with very loose terminology, and, and I think because of that, we were very successful over a long period of time, you know, and yet, I, I'm not sure that the second one would have passed had we not been as specific. And so each, each opportunity needs to be looked on in its own merits, and I think it's good that we can remind ourselves of those things, and the tenor of the public's appetite for various things changes as well.
Thank you, Lauren. Take over to Jay Ford, special consideration of application number two. Stress break, sorry. The work's building. But they didn't get blown over, they didn't get blown up yet.
Yeah. One hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, three dollars and forty-five cents, already signed and recommended by the EK, so there's nothing else to add.
So motion moving forward.
I move pay application number two, for the public who's building an amount of one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents.
Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
If we're ready to vote on that pay application, motion on the floor to approve it. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Jay five, special consideration, I'm going to you with Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation.
So I'm going to go five through seven, and tell you that there might be some minor modifications to the turbage in this. The announcement of the dollars that have been donated and everything will occur at a future date here shortly, but in order to get these established and ready to go, the, the next three items need to be created and adopted. The last remaining item will be then a local committee board that will be created, and that will come out a little later.
The date of that announcement may be May 25th, at a reception at Cornell College in the Commons, which council members will probably get an invitation to.
Chris, can you, I'm, I'm sorry. So, I'll be honest, I got tied up in that, trying to figure out what I was reading here, because they're all, it's like the same words, it's like the same seven words with very little variation. So can you give me just a high-level overview of why those three things, and how they play together?
So the first and foremost, we do not want to try and run our own betterment fund. So the initial memorandum of understanding is with the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation to say, "You're the legal, legal organization, we are operating in," I hate to call it an affiliate, because it's, it's not necessarily an affiliate, but a subsidiary, maybe, of their organization. The other two, there are two separate funds. There is a...
Okay, so that's what I was giving...
Community Betterment Fund, and then there's a Community Tomorrow Fund. And one of them, as monies are donated, will be allowed to essentially dollar and dollar out. The other will be interest-based and...
It's more than dollars.
Yeah, it's more than dollars.
One's more than dollars.
Okay. And is that separate, it was, it was the, those two being...
Yeah. So there'd be, yes, one's an agreement, the other two are the creation of...
Yes, but there's a slight difference in what, what, how you, how they get paid.
Correct.
1.5% for the first two, to administer it, but then for the non-endowed fund, whatever's in there, they get 2% of that.
Correct.
Right.
Because that is going to be the harder of the two, if that continuously has money, because again, money coming in, money coming out, it's much more challenging, I said, ensuring that it's being utilized the way that it's supposed to.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I...
Do these need to be...
Separate motion?
Yes.
Chris alluded to a five-member director, listed directors, that was based upon the advice from the foundation, and I've got four of those five taken care of at this point, looking at a mix of, from the community, I see a little response from Phil, and I'm working on that. But yes, single motion at the time.
So I would move the approval of the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
And, correct. On Jay five, we've got a motion for the floor to approve that memorandum of understanding. If we read the vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Motion carries. Next one's on the Tomorrow Fund, the Endowed Fund. More clarification needed, otherwise not to make a motion.
I'm not going...
Good, there we are. Make a motion to approve the...
Betterment and Endowed Fund.
Betterment and Endowed Fund, thank you very much. Creation of...
That's the one I seconded.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott Stephanie. Got a motion on the floor, if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to approve the Community Betterment and Endowed Fund.
Take the current, and Scott. No further questions, if we're ready to vote on that one, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item Jay eight, special consideration of Chuck the Walk Street Closure Request, council action. It's a pretty broad place.
Yeah, we start to close the streets off on the afternoon of Friday, May 5th, and then we'll open back up on Sunday.
I assume reminders have been sent or will be to businesses.
Yeah, that conversation is already happening, their layout, so...
I approve of the motion to do the street closures for Chuck the Walk.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie. Moving to second to move forward on the Chuck the Walk Street Closure. No further questions, if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of no mow May, recognition request, council action as needed.
So given the timeframe, the fact that we're in April already, and we're talking about May, my recommendation is going to be that we just simply do not actively enforce these requirements in the month of May. Moving forward, I do think that if we are truly going to recognize no mow May, that there should be a normal registration process, whereas we know who is actually actively going to do this. Comes with one small caveat, is if the entire city comes back at me and tells me that they're not going to, just because they don't want to mow, then we may be back to you in May. But I, I think generally speaking, we have less than a half a dozen individuals that wanted to take advantage of this.
True.
To take advantage, and knew what it was when we had a conversation with them.
So when I was looking at the B-City site about this, one of the, one of the cool ideas to distinguish who was doing the no mow May, was that you asked them to mow one or two strips just around the sidewalk, just around their yard, and it looks like it's not just a wreck, and full of weeds and so on, but it looks like, no, I have framed my yard, yeah, I framed my yard with a strip of mowing all the way around it, and then I've not mowed the center of it, and it does exactly what...
Yeah, I think, I, I think at this point, like I said, given the condensed timing of it all, is that we will just work within the digital homeowners that want to take advantage of this program, and bring some of these concepts in. Will be a nice opportunity for us to experiment a little bit. Last year, they didn't have meeting, it was cold, and the grass did not...
Correct.
Did grow quite as well in May, but just so everybody's aware, it's not, please don't take offense to this, it's not that the city does not want to, but this is a difficult thing to do in our city parks, so we probably won't bring this concept into the park situation this year, only because there's got to be a lot more thought that goes into it.
Do you think, though, that there are opportunities that are publicly owned land that are in park?
Yes, and we, you know, as, as we get them under, under our ownership, yeah, I mean, there will be plenty of spaces that we may not mow that will be conducive to this type of environment, but...
But again, the B-City website really is strong, and one of the things that some of these communities have done is, they just, they cut their, for the city property, they cut their mowing in half, or they raise their blades a little bit, or they do different things, and so there are different ways to, I guess, encourage poll leaders.
Yeah. And in certain, certain, some, some years, we're doing that on purpose, just because it's gotten away from us.
By the way, again, the websites and dandelions are not good for poll leaders.
No.
So... Chris, that recommendation to allow but not enforce no mow May, is that...
Yeah, it will take enforcement, it will take what I, their backseat's about.
So is this a motion, or is this just an understanding?
It's more about understanding, but they could change the rule back, yeah.
So don't go, go on...
We can announce on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if we're written down there...
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So there was another idea that was floated about the same time as no mow May was going around as a conversation within the community, and that is the utilization of prescribed herbicides, weed killers, et cetera. Can you elaborate what the city uses and does not use as far as weed killers are concerned?
So we use a lot of what is considered preventative items on our fields. So we attempt to spray and maintain our fields in a different manner than we do the remainder of the parks, simply because when you're playing baseball, you don't want the tops of dandelions blowing all over. So we have almost what amounts to two different concepts here, and we really pay attention to the fields themselves, the rest, we just tend to mow, and try to keep them at manageable levels. I will, well, I was gonna say, I will tell you that Jane does a lot of our, our weed control, her and her staff, by hand. They are hand-pulling weeds in a lot of our parks.
Who's this?
Ah, Jane, she's on her staff.
Okay.
And she's got a, she's got a fairly manageable crew, seven, eight people, that tend to work with her. Most of them are...
Like Sarah or Lisa Cannon, that crew?
Yeah, most of them are, work for the school district, and they're off in the summer, and they work there. So we do, we do attempt to, being a B-City, we do attempt to take those concepts into, into consideration in our maintenance, it's just specifically in the ball fields, soccer fields, there are some things that we, we struggle with.
Clover is not an athlete's friend, because it is very attractive to bees, and not a good place for children to be running around with lunchbees.
I don't have the exact, I can give for the council, but what it is we utilize, if you would like a list.
We do have to file the MSDS forms and things like that, I mean, there's certain disclosures that we have to have as a city, correct?
Yes, we either, we either have to hire this nun, or we have to have an individual on our staff certified and licensed by the state.
I just wanted to acknowledge that that was part of the conversation that was going on at the same time.
For the, for, for last year and likely this year, we will, we will probably be contracting that work. We've had staff turnover, so the individual that has spray license is no longer with us. So it's an evolving process.
But I do think that that's an important thing for our community to understand, is these items aren't applied by people who are not licensed, you do have to be, you do have to have that license to apply.
Correct.
To your question, I literally got an email this afternoon from Good Neighbor Iowa, through you and I, about pesticide over, and I think Matt and Helen may have been copying this. We haven't talked about it, or I haven't read it yet, but it is, be further studied, you're right. Point made there. Wait, Jay 12?
Ten.
Ruben? I'm sorry, I said ten, yeah. Special consideration of WBC fee waiver.
I'm gonna talk about ten and twelve together. They've both fit the concept, one is a blood drive, the second is a community initiative, it does not have a 501(c)(3) status yet. They are looking at working towards that, not as the organization that kind of born out of our initial meeting kickoff meeting at the police department. So both of these meet the requirements that we've established for fee waivers, they have to be nonprofit, they have to serve a public purpose, so obviously, blood drive for notable reasons, and the second is trying to correct an issue that is currently at the forefront of everybody's minds in the city.
So, Chris, my, my question on something like this, at this low dollar amount, does it make sense to come to council for a waiver like this, or should this be done by staff?
So the last time that we had this conversation, we weren't sure how often we were going to get this request. I am, I am comfortable if the council can kind of agree to, you know, being a nonprofit, serving a public purpose, staff making recommendations to, to waive that. In that, in that instance, I would just probably have the LBC staff make their recommendations myself, and then any, any waiver refused would be a monthly report. So technically speaking, I don't have the ability, unless you expressly give it to me, to waive, because it's one of the council's jobs. But with the low dollar amount, you can go on the record and give us that ability, and we can, we can, we can report to you on a monthly basis, as to what is. I think this is probably maybe the fourth time that we've waived fees.
Yeah, there haven't been that many.
There haven't been that many, so if it happens to get to be a problem, I would bring it back to you and say, I mean, well-established parameters before I would leave, similar to what we do with water.
Yeah, I, I feel strongly that this is within staff's purview, you have guidelines, if we need to formalize guidelines, I'd be happy to have that come forward and do that, but I, I, I think that this is clearly something that can be handled by staff.
Agreed, I think it should be for the record. And that may be mentioned a topic for a future meeting, definitely.
Yeah, first time is a lot of...
So I would move approval to waive the fees for the Mount Bergen Community Blood Drive for impact light.
Thank you, Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Scott. Any questions about that waiver? Ready to vote on that? This is, ready to vote on the waiver for the Mount Bergen Community Blood Drive, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion, second, motion read it. Pay application for subging, new item 11.
They're making progress, and I did not print off this pay application, this is when I came in while I was on the conference, but it is pay application number three, and the architect, MBA, has signed off, so...
Questions of staff on that? Ready to, I would motion approve the pay application number two for police station renovation. Thank you, Greg.
I would second with the correction that's pay application number three.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's two, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Moving second to move forward on the pay application number three, let's sub the gun on the police station. No further questions to staff, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Moving second to move forward on the pay application number three, sub-20 on the police station, no further questions, staff, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item under Jay is fee waiver of childcare groups.
I would move approval of the LBC fee waiver for the Mount Vernon childcare group.
I'll second.
Thank you. Moving second to move forward with the fee waiver for the childcare solutions group. No further questions, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've got a section K, reports, human service. Oh. We're two and a half hours in here, but.
I'll collapse tomorrow, so. Yeah, reports are in front of you guys, so if you don't have any questions, I don't think I need to come up and present, it's all, all in front of you.
Say thank you again for everything you and your staff and volunteers do.
Deb, because I know you, he just stated, Jacob stated that if you have any questions, great, otherwise, the report has been submitted.
Jake, great job as usual, and it's really awesome to see that extensive volunteer list.
Yeah.
Impressive, thank you.
And they were able to put fifty grand plus aside for capital for building.
Yeah, so, so that account is really used for, for a lot of our projects, it's not necessarily specifically for the building. You know, we're coming up on a new ambulance purchase, that's actually going to be coming up at our next meeting. They.
We are.
But with that planning and that ability, we're in a much better position to purchase now than we were three years ago, which is crazy to be talking about ordering a truck in three years when it's going to take two years to be built. So it's a whole new challenge for us, ordering that fire add.
So are these two funds, the, the capital improvement and the Dan Rogers, are those the two funds that the operating expenses come out of, or is there other?
So we, we have kind of our general operating that we set forth, and then we were able to take in what our donations are, and then we set aside a certain amount every year to go into a capital project fund that will be able to use for equipment, whether it be, you know, ID pumps, monitors, ambulances, it's building for our future building project, things like that. The Dan Rogers Fund is for a member, Dan Rogers, who passed away back in two thousand and nineteen. His family set up a memorial fund to be utilized for education, so their, their descendants are still working through a process to kind of direct us on where they'd like to see those funds being utilized now, so.
Thank you, this is listening to your report. Yeah, reports, and then moving to discussion item, CIP budget, anything?
No, next meeting we'll have a kind of a budget presentation.
Committee reports, mayor, I'll mention three things, first of all, you have the mayor, fuel, nine o'clock this Saturday, I don't compete against the pancake breakfast, but hopefully you can still make a vote. Pretty bold. Number two, I did the last.
Unless you actually did it at the fire station.
I did. Mission of bear comes to mind, but you know.
Dinner on the mayor, you said? Breakfast on the mayor.
This is what happens when you keep us after nine o'clock, things go out.
It's all me, I'm sure. Secondly, was, Saturday, I did do a walk-in from Mount Vernon to the sustainability meeting, and then had a meeting with the LBC, that was a great site, a great meeting. Besides Mount Vernon, for us, the Cedar Rapids Gazette was also at the location, so a walk-in down to Mount Vernon. Third thing is, you will be getting, council will be getting a survey, if you haven't already gotten it, from John Mark, from Cornell, or from a third party that might be doing a survey of our interactions with the college, and they're saying work on their long-term strategic plan. I've not seen, I've got, yeah, I think it's gonna get.
We got it this afternoon, so.
It just was sent.
The survey's actually been sent?
I haven't looked at it, yeah.
But just, I told John that we would be provided wise and quick input on it, so please complete the, the survey on the next expedited basis.
I guarantee the quick, I'm not sure about the wise.
I know you got, it'll be wise there, so.
For fast answers to the tough questions.
That's right. That's my three things. As a subset of the, hosting that sustainability committee meeting, we had an offer of rain barrels for the community, but we've had a program in the past with a half price rain barrel being subsidized by the public, the church. Now we've got some free ones that Tamara Marcus has, loaded by Pepsi, offered to city, public works if they needed for any locations, but it's also going to come out to the public if they have a, a need for that, I need to put this together.
Please tell me they look like gigantic Pepsi cans.
I don't have a picture, so I can't, I'll, 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 question about mosquito screening, and the, the, it won't be probably the Pepsi cans. Get away from us here. Any council reports, so any council members, or any committee reports?
So I'm not part of the committee, but thinking about the LMI and housing. Sorry, the Cedar Rapids Gazette had a really good article yesterday on the ADUs, the. Alternative blowing units. And I think it's worth everybody's time, if you can get, get a hold of that, to understand what those are a little more, they're a good option that you should be looking.
So, so those topics are under the auspices of the Housing Commission, or what the Housing Commission was, and those, the Housing Commission had taken a proposal and brought it to the council, I'll remind you guys that that happened either late in two thousand and twenty-two, early twenty-one. It was right around the time that Chris Carlson left as the leader of the group, and Laura departed, et cetera, et cetera. So there are some definite thoughts about those things, and some recommendations that were put forward, but yes, I agree, being more educated would be a good thing for all of us.
Yeah, it's in front of the planning commission, and it's my understanding before Laura left, that it's likely that they, they're going to recommend potentially bringing in somebody from outside, whether that's EDC or another organization to look at what those requirements would be, that, that particular selling ordinance as it relates to ADUs. So it's there, it's probably not going to be something that I would consider fast-tracked, you're probably looking at somewhere in the, you know, maybe around six to twelve months as far as.
Sure. We already have some in the community.
Yes.
Is this Glen County planning, is that where it needs to go, or is it local planning developed?
No, local planning.
Our, okay.
Not necessarily a report, but just two quick notes. Number one, I would like to compliment the folks that were volunteers that came out to the golf course to help clean up after the storm the other day, and a shout-out to our public works guys, folks for going over Lisbon and helping, you know, just dig in and do what you need to do, and so, thank you to everybody involved there. And then just another reminder, this weekend, we've got both the pancake breakfast and the egg hunt, which I almost forgot last time I got you.
Forget it.
Saturday morning, pancakes bright and early, let's say like six o'clock. Crazy, and is that then at ten?
Ten o'clock, baby.
So.
Ten o'clock.
My trick is to go at nine forty. I'm not kidding, you got a whole bunch of people walking over to the thing, the pancakes always.
Why would you make that public now?
There's a long change.
They're gonna be a good fuel target, Tom.
I need you to bring me a fuel copy, because I'll be at the station at four thirty in the morning, so at least send one over. I'm sad you missed it.
Yeah, wants to say something?
Yeah, I do. So the CVG did have the committee start to take a look at developing the DEI statement that they're going to put forward from the development group. It's in motion, it's in progress, it's not a done deal, but they've been taking input from the school district, from Cornell. Tom, with your approval, I'll send them the proclamation that you wrote to us tonight.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think in the end, there should be a, a harmony of words that are meaningful, and I'll remind us that the strength comes in the actions that we build by what we say we espouse to.
Thank you for going after that. Thanks, group. Anything else that needs to come before this council, that's Paul?
I'm gonna spill all my butter.
Something to report on, sir?
The only other thing I would report is, we did have the events of last Friday. Everything, you know, Mount Vernon was actually spared. With that being said, tomorrow looks to be like another day of potential, or, 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 so. Please be safe, there were about fifteen individuals that did come down and utilize city halls, they sheltered, so that's always an option. It will be open tomorrow, it will be open throughout the night. There's talk of at least three different potentials, noon to three, three to six, and then six and after, and to absolutely once in a while, so be safe.
Anything else that needs to come before this council, otherwise we are adjourned, thank you very much.